And repeat after me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, I see that you have a message from Councilmember Awad?
Yes, Mayor, I have a statement to be read on behalf of Councilmember Awad. Dear Council, regretfully, I will be unable to make today's meeting due to a family emergency. While I hold attendance at city council meetings to be extremely important, having missed only one other meeting in five years, I'm sure you agree that family must come first. As many of you are aware, my mother is battling breast cancer, and while her treatment has mostly gone well, today was an unexpectedly bad day, and I must take her to see her physician urgently. Therefore, I won't be able to join you today. Thank you in advance for understanding the situation, and please have a good meeting. Hadar Awad Hawthorne City Councilmember.
Okay. Right, so we'll go, Councilmember Valentine has a presentation on the agenda?
Yes, and it is an update on the COVID crisis, and it's going to be presented by our city manager, Eric Lee.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Just as a recap, the council declared a state of emergency on March 15th regarding COVID-19. And as of yesterday, there are over 176,000 positive cases of COVID-19 across LA County with a total of 4,375 deaths. Locally in Hawthorne, we have 1,276 positive cases as of yesterday with 29 deaths, including 19 deaths from our senior facilities. Big picture, at the LA County level, they're embracing a new strategy, which they're calling the three Cs. That is compliance, containment, and collaboration. As it relates to compliance, they're really looking for businesses to comply with the county's health orders and implement strict infection control practices. They've also introduced a new enforcement protocol for businesses in that fines will be issued for being out of compliance during their first two inspections. Businesses that are found on the third inspection to still be out of compliance will be shut down. On the resident side for compliance, they're imploring residents to continue to wear face coverings, maintain physical distancing, avoid gatherings with people outside their household, and continue to hand washing and cleaning of high-touch surfaces. As it relates to the containment strategy, the county has improved testing capacity, case interviews, and contact tracing. And it also mandated that businesses must alert the health department of any outbreaks that occur in work sites. And then the third C is collaboration, and they're looking for that across all sectors of society and government, and looking for clear messaging, uninterrupted supply chains for testing supplies and personal protective equipment, and unity of strategies reopening with as much safety as possible. Yeah, as it relates to the city's regional engagement with other cities in the South Bay, Area G is the mutual aid group that we're part of, and they've assembled a multidisciplinary task force to deal with COVID-19. This includes police, fire, hospitals, doctors, LA County health workers, and other critical employees that discuss best practices for dealing with COVID. Currently, we're well represented on that task force, which meets daily to wrestle with issues facing the South Bay cities, its school districts, and its citizens. Additionally, as the council is well aware, we're operating a county COVID-19 testing site at Memorial Center, and that is continued and is looking to continue into the foreseeable future. And our recreation and community services department continues to provide meals to teens and seniors that are in need during this time. The recent spike in infections around LA County are widely seen as policymakers balancing the science and the economic impacts of shutting down our communities. This includes the opening and then closing of indoor dining, the opening and closing of gyms, bars, barber shops, and salons. And they're also seeing the increased social gatherings of large groups of people is contributing to the resurgence. Additionally, as we all know, in the urban environment of Los Angeles, the dense population and housing certainly is a factor. On July 14th, the state and the CDC and the county issue new restrictions, and essentially, they've closed all indoor dining, indoor gyms are closed, bars are closed on the inside, as well as barber shops and salons are interoperable. Our code enforcement and police department continues to work with the community and really help navigate this troubled time. This includes focus on outdoor dining, and I'm pleased to report that we now have approximately 20 restaurants that have implemented outdoor dining, and staff is ready to assist any other restaurateurs that want to have the ability and want to make that switch. Focus on outdoor gyms, outdoor barber shops and salons. Additionally, and I'd like to really thank our code enforcement staff, they're preparing a licensing packet that they can go out, and when they're conducting compliance checks, they can also hand literature to the business owner so they know exactly what they need to do to get proper licensing within the city to have these outdoor activities. As it relates to internally, what we're doing to focus on our employee safety, we're obviously encouraging the use of personal protective equipment and social distancing among our employees. We've established cleaning stations throughout our facilities. We've implemented staggered team schedules when possible, allowed employees to telework when that's possible, and regular disinfection of vehicles. We're also leveraging the in-house expertise of Dr. Joe Nakagawa, our medical director, and that's helped us to streamline the COVID-19 testing process for our employees if and when there's a potential exposure. Additionally, we've recently established an internal COVID-19 task force. This is a multi-disciplinary, I'm sorry, multi-departmental group representing all levels of the city organization. And the charge of this group is to discuss workplace issues and develop recommendations for our executive team to consider. So the internal issues that we're working through, it relates to work schedules. With the schools closed for this foreseeable future, we're anticipating that childcare among our workforce is going to be an issue we have to wrestle with. And externally, you know, trying to find out what's the best way for our city to assist our business community navigate the multiple health department orders proclaimed by the state and the county at the county level. You know, as an overview for City Hall, essentially, we are closed to the public, but that does not mean we're not here. In fact, staff and all departments are still working. Business can be conducted via phone, email, and on the city's website. Additionally, for summer programming, our recreation and community services department has many of its facilities now open, and you can check our website for details. Additionally, reservations are being accepted for individual and group swim activities at the Hawthorne Pool, and we're offering free virtual recreation classes on our Hawthorne Community Channel 22 and the department's website. And I'd just really like to thank also, you know, the visionary leadership we do have in our recreation and community services group with Vaughn Norris, and as you know, our outstanding cable TV team for really producing those vehicles, I'm sorry, those videos. And then, you know, lastly, we are developing plans to reopen City Hall to the public once the virus does subside, and I'll keep the council informed if and or as we get closer to that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Valentine, do you have anything else on that since you introduced it?
No, well, I will have something in my elected officials' reports, but nothing right now.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, Eric. Eric, I do have a question, though. You said there were 19 deaths from our senior facilities. Do we know, that's certainly consistent with what's going on in the rest of the country, but do you know why, what happened there at the senior, at our senior facilities?
I don't specifically know, yeah, unfortunately, I think that's certainly the most vulnerable part of our population. And it, you know, it's unfortunate that it replicates a pattern we're seeing throughout LA County, and as you mentioned, the nation. Specifically, I don't have the specifics, I imagine they do exist, but I don't know what they are.
Okay, can we find out what the cause was and whether or not whatever, whatever, whatever they were doing, maybe hopefully they've improved their procedures so this doesn't happen anymore? Because it's, that's a lot, that's quite a lot for our small city.
It's something that I will look into.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, can you please read the guidelines for oral communications, sir?
Yes, I can. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies, as a body, should have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Do you have any communications?
Yes, I do. I have one oral and three written. So I'm going to go ahead and get, so, let's see. Math, Matthew Zarro is going to be on the phone.
Okay. Okay, Matthew, can you hear us?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, go ahead, Matthew. You have three minutes. Matthew, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm ready to talk.
Okay, go ahead, Matthew.
Dear City Council, I'm calling on behalf of my friends Dawn and Mike, who are living on the streets of Hawthorne. Mike is dying of a heart condition, and today Dawn heard back from Lhasa that there are no rooms available to them through Project Room Key. I have met with Jesse Ramirez to discuss the options for unhoused humans in Hawthorne, and have learned that despite his hard work and commitment to the well-being of unhoused in our community, Hawthorne is completely failing our unhoused neighbors. There is no place for unhoused people to legally sleep in Hawthorne, no safe place for those who are too poor to afford an apartment to lay down in. There is no place in Hawthorne for people to take a shower or perform necessary hygiene, all human beings require. I have reached out to Councilmember Hadar several times to discuss homeless issues with me, and he has been unresponsive. We as a city have completely failed, and as our leaders, it is your responsibility to lead us in a better direction. I'm calling on each of you to personally take responsibility for the lack of compassion and love shown to the people who suffer on the streets of Hawthorne. I call for each of you to use your leadership positions to aid and advocate for Mike and Dawn, to come with me and talk with them, listen to them, to show them love and respect, and to help them get off the streets before Mike dies. We claim that Hawthorne is the city of good neighbors. I ask you, who is the better neighbor? One who allows humans to suffer and die on our streets, or someone who offers shelter, safety, water, and love? I implore you to not be like the priests or Levite and ignore this issue, but to be like the Samaritan, to respond as God calls us to respond to the suffering of others. There are obvious solutions to these problems. We as a city could commit to providing safe space and services to our neighbors, whether it is at Hawthorne Mall, Memorial Park, or any of the other suitable locations around Hawthorne, we could provide life-saving services, services like a safe place to sleep, showers, medical aid, sanitation, food assistance, job assistance, and perhaps most importantly, the knowledge that people who live in this city care about them. One of the most perverse things we do as a community to our unhoused neighbors is to dehumanize them, to demonize them, and to criminalize them. We do this so that we can justify their suffering in our minds, to explain why they don't deserve our help. Let's instead value their lives, show them that we care, and we want to help them in the ways that we can. Thank you for your time and for listening to me tonight.
Oh, thank you, sir, for communicating with us. I'm going to ask our city manager to please try to follow up with the gentleman that just called and see if we can help Dawn and Mike in the immediate, right, as of now, while we look at other options. Is that okay, Mr. City Manager? Can you do that for us?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I couldn't really hear you.
Could you repeat that, Alex? And I'm actually, Matthew, I'm going to hang up so you can hear him from the YouTube, since you're watching him on YouTube, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. All right.
He wanted you to repeat what you stated, Mayor Vargas.
He's going to watch it right now.
Yeah.
All right, well, Mr. City Manager, can you just follow up with Dawn and Mike right now, as of now, while we look at other options for the other issues that were brought up?
Yes.
Okay, if you can contact, thank you.
All right, so we have another oral communication that just called in, so I'm going to, let's see. Maggie?
Hi.
Hi, Maggie Clark, you are going to be speaking now at Public Comments. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah. Hi, I don't think I'm going to be taking my whole three minutes today, but I am calling in about the same thing that another caller just spoke about, speaking out on the lack of services for unhoused folks here in Hawthorne. I'm also a friend of mine and Dawn, who are other people who live in their encampments, those in neighboring encampments. And I'm really disturbed that there don't seem to be any solutions available to these unhoused people. I'm also extremely disturbed about this, you know, particularly, of course, in light of COVID and in light of the evictions and increasing homelessness crisis, which is probably going to be coming to our communities soon, as people weren't able to see their rent or take out their apartments. I'm sure you guys know that the city of Los Angeles eviction courts are set to start opening again in just a couple of weeks. So I would really like to see some action from our city council on, you know, developing a plan to serve these people in our community. I would also really like to hear more from the city council about what you're doing for renters in our own community. I know from my experience being a renter in Hawthorne and working with a lot of other renters in this area, that very few landlords are showing much compassion for the situation that we're all in. And I'm really concerned to see what's going to happen when, you know, the additional federal unemployment runs out that a lot of us are depending on, and when evictions start again. So I would really like some more action from the council on that as well. Thanks, bye.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Oh, thank you, Mr., thank you, ma'am, for calling. Mr. City Manager, I would like to direct you to contact both of these individuals that just called. And we, last meeting, we had a discussion on our homeless task force and on what it's doing. And we've previously had different items that we've done as a city council to help the renters. So if you could kind of relay that information, we welcome any calls, but then we also have the information that we have available and things that we have done. So if you can make this available to them, please do so.
Yes, we will.
Thank you to both of those two callers for calling.
Okay, and there's three more written comments. So the next one is from Araceli Cornejo, July 14, 2020. To whom may concern, my name is Araceli Cornejo, and I would like to give you my perspective on homelessness and how it has impacted my life personally. Being the child of a father with alcoholism, I know firsthand that addictions go hand in hand with homelessness, if not getting the proper and adequate treatment needed, as well as the willpower to thrive over the addiction. I also know that there are many people whom have had experienced different situations and unfortunately ended up on the streets. There are families now that have lost jobs due to the pandemic and still couldn't make ends meet with the unemployment in which some of these landlords couldn't afford to help them out with in regards to rent and getting evicted. I feel that if we had some form of shelters open for families to stay together, as well as shelters for those with mental disabilities, we would be making a mark towards the right direction. Also, offering behavioral health services would be of tremendous benefit. Although many experience homelessness due to the economic reasons, there are those that did not treat their mental health issues due to lack of insurance, not enough money, or no one ever reached out to them. They decided the easier route was using alcohol or drugs to cope with the underlying anxiety, depression, or mental disabilities driving them to lose everything and be out in the street. As a community, we can increase our efforts to help the homeless with donating clothing, household items, as well as food, or our time in helping out shelters to provide these services for these people. Safe parking is also a great way to support homeless people. A shelter in the South Bay is also needed. There were many days and nights that my father walked down Hawthorne Boulevard looking for help, showing the lack of accessibility and support for homeless people. Let's help them get back on their feet, which will positively impact our community, the community of good neighbors. I would like to thank you for your time and taking into consideration how to make our community a better place for all.
Thank you, Araceli.
The next comment is from Carol Mastin, longtime resident since 1972. We, my neighborhood, are experiencing more people dumping trash in our alley. I actually confronted a guy today, 7/27/2020, dumping trash from his pickup truck. He apologized and took off without picking up the trash dumped. My neighbor three doors down, cameras may have caught his license plate number. Who would I send this information to, in fact, if we get a good license plate number? I have pictures of the trash dumped. If possible, can cameras be installed in the alley by the city, or can we have more signs posted down the alley about illegal dumping? Thank you.
Oh, Mr. City Manager, sir, can you contact Ms. Carol Mastin? This seems to be a problem in some of our, this, well, in the Holly Park neighborhood, what we have is those walls or sound barriers between the houses and the freeways. So it might be possible that they might be dumping there or in one of our alleys. So if we could just take an extra look and just have patrols go out there more frequently, and if we could help address your concern.
Yes, we'll do that.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
And the third and final comment comes from Jacques. It's time to rethink the moratorium on issuing parking by permit in our residential streets. The moratorium issued in November 2016 was hastily and arbitrarily passed with proper analysis of the parking problem. To grant the restricted parking to some residents while denying others results in overcrowded of those adjunct streets where parking is unrestricted. I see many people daily who are obviously residents of Hawthorne having to park two, three, four blocks away from where they live in front of someone else's residence. This patchwork of restricted and unrestricted parking creates an unbalanced parking situation. I would hope that the council return some control to the Hawthorne neighborhoods and their residents by restoring the restricted parking petition process and modifying the resident requirements to include those that are currently not able to acquire a permit on the street where they live. That is the last public comment.
Mr. City Manager, with regards to this, with regards to this item, no, actually, we do have things that are in place. We just need to make sure that, could we consider maybe doing some type of PSA, a public service announcement, encouraging our residents to park responsibly also, because sometimes they take up more than one parking spot? PSA with regards to that, being responsible towards their neighbors, and also to promote our T-parking that we have so that people can apply for that, and we can maybe start painting some spaces in areas that are a problem? Could you consider doing that and just let us know if that's something feasible that we could do, Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
That sounds good, okay. Okay, but I appreciate his call. I understand his concern. We understand his concern. Anything else?
Oh, that is all.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wants to address this, these bodies? If not, the oral communication is closed, ordered. Mr. Clerk, your consent calendar, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have 10 items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item six, approval of city council minutes for the regular meeting of July 14, 2020. Item seven, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item eight, city treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item 11, resolution number 8215, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving and authorizing submission of application for CalRecycle Household Hazardous Waste Grant Program, for which the city of Hawthorne is eligible. Item 12, resolution number 8217, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing the city manager to execute a cooperative agreement between the city of Hawthorne and the city of Gardena regarding para-transit services for fiscal years 2020 to 2021 and 2021 to 2022. Item 13, resolution number 8218, resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, submitting to the voters at the November 3, 2020 general municipal election, an ordinance relating to the utility users' taxes. Item 14, resolution number 8220, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, adopting an award presentation policy for city council meetings. Item 15, resolution 8221, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, amending the appropriations limit calculations for the fiscal years 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021, pursuant to the article 13B of the California Constitution. Item 16, resolution 8222, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, appointing council member Olivia Valentine as the city's voting delegate to the League of California Cities Annual Conference, October 7 through October 9, 2020, in Long Beach, California. Item 17, resolution 8223, a resolution of the city of Hawthorne, California, renaming 116th Street between Van Ness Avenue and Wilton Place in the city of Hawthorne Darlene Love Street for adoption.
Would like to vote number 13 for a discussion, please.
Okay, I make a, I make a motion on all other items?
Okay.
Please vote.
Okay. Councilmember Montero? Oh, you're muted, councilmember.
I want to pull number 14, resolution 8220, and 17, resolution 8223, please. I made a motion for all the others.
Wait, 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 there's an, there's an act of motion, so you have to be nice to me. You have to be nice to me to pull it back.
You didn't listen to me. I would say hello, hello.
Nobody heard you.
That was your fault. You're on, you muted yourself.
All right, so let's keep track of this. Which items, Councilwoman Valentine, which one did you pull?
13.
13, and I pulled 14 and 17.
13, 14, and 17? Yeah, I saw you waving your hands. I'm like, what's going on with this? All right, I make a motion on all, I retract my previous motion, and I'll make a motion on all items except 13, 14, and 17.
17, second?
Okay.
Second by Councilmember Valentine.
Okay, please vote.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Tayeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Okay, please go ahead, Councilwoman Valentine.
Yes, this is the resolution that's going to submit to the voters and ordinance relating to utility users' taxes. And I'm going to ask the city manager to explain the purpose of that and what it actually means for the voters.
Yes, thank you. You know, the city currently opposes a 5% tax on water, electric, natural gas, and communication utility services. And so staff is recommending that the city council adopt this resolution, placing a measure on the November ballot to increase this tax by 2.5% to a total of 7.5%. If approved by the voters, this tax increase would raise approximately $3.2 million in general fund revenues annually. You know, the purpose behind this, the, this is something that the council has been, well, I think, you know, the former city manager has been talking to the council about for over the last year. Originally was viewed as an opportunity to really shore up the revenue base as it relates to long-term needs of the city, disaster preparedness, you know, that, that, those types of needs that we really have. And so, you know, in light of that, and coupled with, you know, tectonic shifts that have occurred in the economy, staff is recommending that the city does proceed with this item, even though it's, you know, I think there's, Um, even though it it's, you know, I think there's, it's acknowledged we're in a state of emergency and. Um, and and no one likes tax increases and um and and not sure where the voters are gonna land on this. Uh, but it's something, you know, from a a financial management perspective, you know, we think it's prudent uh to uh request the voters to vote on this. Um, and you know, that includes my report. If you have any other questions, I'm I'm happy to to answer them.
Thank you. I I moved that the um.
Well, just a moment, uh, just a moment, I, Mister, Mister, Mister City Manager, did this orig- this? Did did this originate from the city council or from the staff? Can you just highlight that because it's important for the residents to know that this didn't come from anyone on the council?
Correct. This is a staff-driven item. It's something that uh the previous city manager. Um, had been working on for quite a few months and he 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 had talked about the uh the potential for this item, I think during the budget presentation. Um, in the spring and and maybe even during the mid-year update, is it something that um he he thought would be wise for the council to consider? Um, I am uh taking a baton from Mister Shadbear, um, and having looked at the finances of the city. Um, and um, you know, the, you know, the mountains that we have to climb in the future. Um, it it's, this is not an exciting item to to bring to you or to the voters. Um, but yeah, I do think it's something that is is important that we need to consider, um, and would be very helpful for the city uh in the long run.
So the voters are ultimately the ones that decide yes or no, correct?
That's correct. So, you know, we we need a a forfeits vote um to get this on the ballot. Um, and and that all it does is get it on the ballot with the language we provided in the resolution. Um, ultimately, the voters in November will decide uh by um, uh, they need, we need a majority vote by the voters. To actually enact this ordinance to change the tax.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, Eric, so it it is also my understanding that, you know, this U U T tax, a long time ago, uh. The staff been talking about, it's not just, you know, recently or just for the past year. I think it's be, it's been um in discussion for many, many years ago. Because Hawthorne was one of the cities that is the lowest tax on U U T so so far, correct?
That is correct, and this would put us, um, you know, right in the middle of the pack as far as surrounding cities. Certainly not the highest, um, and not the lowest either.
Okay, all right. But yeah, because I I understand that even even from the previous administration, it was a discussion that. Uh, to increase and then they didn't do nothing and of course, you know, because of the pandemic and because of the sales tax are low, property tax all. Low, so we we could definitely um. See an improvement for the our budget for the next fiscal year, so thank you.
Okay, good. We understand it's a fourth this vote. Uh, unfortunately, uh, it's unfortunate that council member Hadarawat's not here. To vote for this item. We would like, have liked to hear what, how he feels on this too. Okay.
Uh, to the chair.
Yes.
Well, we we want, we wanna wish uh Hadarawat's mom's uh health and hope she could recuperate soon. Uh, but um, he went to lunch with two candidates this afternoon, so just FYI.
Okay, yeah. All right, so. Anybody wanna go ahead and make a motion and second?
Miss Valentine made a motion already.
Yes, I moved approval of eighty-two eighteen, resolution eighty-two eighteen.
I second.
Okay, please vote.
Council member Montero?
Yes.
Council member Tayeda?
Yes.
Council member Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Um, next item, please.
So item fourteen, I believe, you guys are gonna speak about?
Yes. Can I proceed, Mister?
Oh, yes, because uh that's uh fourteen. Yeah, sorry about that.
Uh, first, I want, I wanna say uh thank you to uh our city attorney Russell for creating this this uh. Resolution because this is what we were discussing uh the last city council meeting. I remember that I brought up about the presentation of uh of awards and recognition. Uh, and specifically uh regarding to uh Hadarawat and his foundation and his family foundation. Uh, and we wanted to protect the integrity of our city council meeting. That is a public entity, not uh a family affair. Uh, so so we encourage transparency and political participation. So I wanna commend Russell for creating this resolution and is well-written. And so for for the future, so nobody would be abused of the uh public uh time. And 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 try to promote uh uh self instead of the public official. And the city itself. So thank you, Russell, for putting this resolution together. And uh is unfortunately again that Mister Awad is not here, but this is a clear. Uh, understanding about our role as a public official versus self-interest. So thank you, Russell, and I move, uh, make a motion to approve.
Okay. Second, please vote.
Council member Montero?
Yes.
Council member Tayeda?
Yes.
Council member Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Did I proceed with seventeen?
Yes, sir, I'm so sorry.
But thank you, Mister Mayor. Okay, the resolution uh eighty-two-twenty-three, again, I wanna uh commend Russell. And the and staff for putting this resolution together. As you know, the the last city council meeting, I gave a directive to come up with the uh. Uh, Ms. Darlene Love Street. So I wanna commend the staff for coming with the resolution. And I know all of you is going to be in favor of this resolution. Again, it's to rename. Um, the street between once uh Van Ness and uh Wilton. Between on one sixteen, between Van Ness and Wilton, uh Darlene Love Street. So um, and I know she's right there in heaven smiling and she would say, why you didn't do this when I was there? So anyway, um, but I wanna give you a a blessing on this. Thank you very much, Russell, for creating this, and I make a move.
I second.
Please vote.
Council member Montero?
Yes.
Council member Tayeda?
Yes.
Council member Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. That concludes my consent calendar, Mister Mayor.
Yeah, uh, Mayor Protem and fellow council members, I mean, look. Everybody still talks about uh Darlene Love. My mom asked about her, a couple of the residents, we heard about Darlene Love. I mean, look, we miss being in the council chambers and talking to. The committee through cable, but also having that live audience and she was at every single meeting. You know, unless she had an emergency, had to go to the hospital or something, she was always there, man, so. Uh, you know, fix here in our community, so, you know, I missed her today. I mean, when you mentioned this, it kind of just gave me this little feeling.
Chill.
Yeah, right, right, yeah. Okay, uh, next item, please. Mister City Clerk, I think this is you still?
Yeah, public hearing.
Yes.
Okay, so public hearing number nineteen. Now is the time and place for a public hearing and introduction of the ordinance. Number two-two-zero-five repealing section seventeen point two-zero-one-three-zero accessory dwelling unit of chapter seventeen point two-zero. Development standards for all residential zones of title seventeen zoning and adding a new chapter seventeen point two-one accessory dwelling unit. To title seventeen zoning of the Hawthorne Municipal Code. Plan Department Declaration pub- publication filed, no rank communications were received.
No, nothing was received, so nobody wants to talk about this, correct?
Correct.
Go ahead and read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance, ordinance twenty-two oh five, first reading. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California repealing section seventeen point two-zero-one-three-zero accessory dwelling unit. Of chapter seventeen point two-zero development standards for all residential zones of title seventeen zoning. And adding a new chapter seventeen point two-one accessory dwelling unit to title seventeen zoning of the Hawthorne Municipal Code for introduction.
Um, I'm going to.
Oh, um, I would like to ask our city manager Eric Lee to to discuss this with the council, please.
Okay, so uh, sure, and then you introduce it. Go ahead, Mister City Manager. Please uh, please tell us what this is about. Please let the community know what this is about and. Any misconceptions that they might have, please clarify them, please.
Yes, I I I will tune this off and then I'm gonna turn it over to our uh planning director Greg Suzuchi. Um, but you know, as um, as most California has been dealing with over uh the past year or so. Uh, the state has um enacted uh new laws as it relates to local control of accessory dwelling units. And um, you know, the the purpose of the the ordinance uh that we want to introduce today is really to update our municipal code. Um, and it's it's really in the spirit of retaining as much local control as is allowed under uh new state law, which admittedly is not much. Um, but uh we are trying to preserve that. Um, this has been uh uh heard and recommended by our planning commission. And I will turn it over to our planning director Greg Suzuchi for a little more details about substantively what this will do.
Uh, thank you, Mister City Manager. Can you hear me out there?
Yes.
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 Uh, so good evening, Mayor, Mayor, Protem and members of the council. Um, unfortunately, my camera's not working. Uh, item number nineteen before you is a recommendation to hold a public hearing and introduce ordinance number twenty-two zero five. Uh, it's an ordinance that repeals certain sections of the municipal code concerning accessory dwelling units. And also replaces uh the language with uh new language concerning accessory dwelling units. Um, like the city manager has stated, this is in response to the state's uh new senate bills and assembly bills. Uh, specifically, uh, Assembly Bill eighty-eight-one, Senate Bill thirteen and Assembly Bill sixty-eight. Uh, which made effective new laws uh come January first, twenty twenty. Um, it severely limited uh local control over these ADUs. This is nothing that the. City is trying to do. Um, these are mandated by the state of California and all the cities are are having to fall under this. These new law, uh, new laws concerning ADUs and JADUs. Um, if you recall back in two thousand eighteen, um, this city adopted. An ordinance uh to exhort some sort of control over ADUs. Uh, but in response to that, uh, the state uh then um. Basically took what local controls the cities had and and basically made them null and void. Um, and so they've made their own laws that by default, all the local jurisdictions are following. Unless they adopt their own ordinance. And so in order for the city to have some sort of little uh local control. Um, staff had uh developed this ADU with our consultants, uh ADU ordinance with our consultants. So that we would have some sort of say uh in 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 this uh, in these new mandated ADU laws. Um, what I'd like to do is just kind of go over, it's, there's a lot of information in here. And and I have staff with me to answer any of your technical questions later after I'm done, but I'd like to give you a general overview. Of what the, some of the key provisions of the of the new state ADU and JADU laws are. And and they're all listed on on page two of your staff report, but for the public, uh, I wanna mention that. Um, there's no longer a discretionary rev- review of ADUs and JADUs. It's now prohibited. Meaning this doesn't go before the planning commission or the city council. It's ministerial, meaning it needs to be expedited. Um, and done without having to go through that process, so it's done at the, at the planning department level. Um, ADUs have to be approved at all residential and mixed use zone lots. Um, with a single-family dwelling and lots with existing multifamily dwellings. Um, it permits to ADUs on single-family's own lots within the existing or proposed single-family dwelling or accessory structure. Um, accessory structures could be a garage, uh, a carport, uh, maybe like a romper room. Um, it prohibits lot size minimums to develop ADUs and JADUs, and that was one of the big. Um, uh, pro, uh, I guess one of the key elements of the previous ordinance and a lot of cities ordinances. Was saying that you needed to have a certain lot size in order to have one of these. Well, now the state is saying you can't. You can't enact that. That's, that's all null and void now. Uh, it permits an ADU to be either attached to or located within the proposed existing primary dwelling. Including attached garages, storage areas or similar uses or accessory structures. It permits an ADU to be detached from the proposed or existing primary dwelling. Uh, it prohibits requiring more than one parking space per ADU or per bedroom, whichever is less. Uh, there's a maximum height of sixteen feet and four feet, uh, rear and side setbacks must be permitted. And no owner occupancy requirement for ADUs. Uh, meaning you can't require that the owner live on site. Uh, well, in order to develop an ADU. Now, that'll change in twenty twenty-five, but right now. Um, we can't deed restrict that to where the owner needs to live on the site. Uh, but you can do this for JADUs and and so the the staff is recommending that we we do do it for JADUs. Um, see, the. You know, again, it, the these new laws severely limit uh to the extent that what the city can regulate. These new ADUs and JADUs. Um, but where it had some flexibility, the staff did um try and take the the most. I guess least more restrictive route where where the state allowed us to. Um, and if you look down at this uh staff report where we made a little chart. Um, there are certain provisions that uh staff made recommendations that we take the more restrictive route. Um, and I'll quickly go through those. Um, one, the state is saying that it requires a local, local agency to permit an ADU or JADU. In any residential mixed zone that allows residential units. Um, there's really no flexibility other than permitting junior ADUs in multifamily or mixed-use residential zones. Or other than not permitting, I'm sorry. So we've incorporated language to only permit junior ADUs on parcels with a proposed or existing single-family dwelling unit. So we're not allowing them in the multifamily uh zones. Um, the state says that we require the local agency to only permit a junior ADU within the existing. Uh, proposed single-family dwelling or accessory structure. So they gave us two options. We selected one. Uh, the city is permitting a JADU only within the existing or proposed. Single-family dwelling and not an accessory structure. The state says that we, the permitting permits the local agency to require a deed restriction, requiring order occupy. Order occupancy for a junior ADU. So they said we could require it and so we are. Um, again, that's for juniors and not not ADUs, just a junior ADUs. Um, it prohibits local agencies from placing limits on lot coverage ratio, um, and we're complying with all of that. Um, but we also are prohibiting second. Second stories or ADUs above garages or other accessory structures by limiting the height to sixteen feet. And having the four-foot rear and side setback areas. There's a couple more here. Um, the state's requires jurisdictions to permit. Um, junior ADUs but um. On single-family zone lots, but does not require them to be allowed on multifamily lots. So again, we're not allowing them on multifamily lots. Um, it requires an ADU to be detached from the proposed or existing primary dwelling. Um, the city is requiring that a newly constructed detached ADU must be located to the rear of the primary residence. Um, property owners may not designate their existing single-family home as the accessory dwelling unit and then build a larger residence in the rear. Uh, an existing or proposed single-family home will be designated as the primary building on that site. Um. Those are so uh some of the ways that we've made it a little bit more restrictive than what the state. Has by default allowed and has given us that that authority to do. Now, one of the new things that they're requiring is when we adopt this ordinance, we still have to send it back up to the state. For them to comment and review it. If they find anything. That they believe is in contradictory to to the state law, they'll. Make us uh fix that and take it back um to the council to to amend. So, um, you know, there being a lot, they're having a lot more oversight on this. Um, in comparison to back in two thousand eighteen. Um, one thing I do also wanna mention that's not in this current ordinance, but will be added at a later time. Is if you recall back in two thousand eighteen, one of the ways that you're able to restrict where ADUs and JADUs were to be placed. Was based on uh the sewer system, whether it had the capacity to to hold or. Take on these additional types of units. Um, and that's still in effect, however, now you have to, since we don't run our own water system and sewer system. We have to consult with those agencies and let them review this um prior to to having it in our ordinance. So the city already had done a map um by our Public Works Department. Um, this go around, we need to now consult with our 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 utilities, uh, companies, our water and our sewers. Uh, before the state will allow us to put that in the ordinance. So when we get that done, we'll go ahead and add that portion. portion into this ordinance, but we didn't want to wait, um, because that could take some time with this COVID and in meeting up with them. So that that portion will be added at a later time. Um, we don't, you know, there wasn't a whole lot of areas back in two thousand eighteen that's this affected where you could restrict ADUs because of the sewer limitations or utility limitations, but there may be some in some locations. So we're definitely gonna at least take a look at that and and add that back into this ordinance when when we're able to. I have staff with me, uh, Maria and also Melissa, our Assistant City Attorney, who spent many months going over this with our consultants. And if you have any additional questions, especially technically related questions, um, they're available to to answer any questions you might have.
I have a couple of questions to the chair. Uh, Greg, uh, some of the major changes with this was originally there was a covenant that you had to sign that you had to absolutely live there. And you couldn't do it unless it was an owner occupied. So that is completely gone, right?
Um, yes, for ADUs, but not junior ADUs. I'll I'll let Maria, maybe you have a little bit more technical.
Yeah, you know.
Yes, that is correct through the chair. That is correct. Uh, ADUs, we cannot require owner occupancy. But for junior ADUs, we can require a deed restriction requiring owner occupancy.
What is the main difference between a junior and a regular?
So in accordance to this code, the main difference is that a junior ADU is much smaller. The maximum size is five hundred square feet and it must be within the existing single-family residence, meaning that is the main difference.
Take a four-bedroom house and take one bedroom and and convert that to a junior.
Correct, with with a bathroom and an efficiency kitchen.
Okay, and then the, the other thing that was not permitted in any way was taking a duplex and adding another unit to a duplex, correct? Now, okay, let me rephrase that. Let's say that you had a a a a non-owner occupied rental of two units. And you wanted to add an A, um, what was it? A, I was gonna say ADU, but.
ADU.
ADU, uh, you could do that. Right? You could, you could literally take a duplex and make it into a triplex.
Yes.
You can actually do.
Now you can. Yes.
Now, before the setbacks, for example, it's always been like fifteen feet in the rear. So in other words, you couldn't build, uh, you couldn't do any building within fifteen feet of the rear of the lot, correct?
It was actually five feet from the rear of the lot. But with the new state regulations, we must allow four feet from the sides and the rear.
And what, how how's the parking, how has the parking requirement changed? You used to require one parking per bedroom? And now if you turn it into a two-bedroom, you still only require one parking? Is that correct?
Potentially. If, if the property is within a quarter mile of a bus bench, they don't require any parking.
Okay, so that's still, uh, that's still in in the, in the regulation that you still need to be within a certain distance of a bus or, which probably just about any place in Hawthorne, that wouldn't apply anyway.
That is correct. We have a lot of arterials, yes.
Well, you know, those are, those are kind of my questions because you get very technical. And and basically, you've almost eliminated the owner occupants. So the owner doesn't necessarily have to live in the home uh, to be able to do this where before they did. And before you, uh, uh, and that was primarily single-family residence, was it not?
That's correct.
Now it pretty much applies to any residential mixed-use or, what about commercial? Can can?
It does not apply. It does not apply to uh, residential buildings or single-family homes that are zoned commercially or industrially.
Okay, so let's just, anybody, so the the number, is there a limit on the number of units that you can have on a lot that would um, prohibit you adding another unit? In other words, let's say you got a six-unit on a R-four lot. And you want to uh, add another unit to that. Could you do it under this uh, guideline?
Yes, you can. Under these guidelines, the state has indicated that multifamily or mixed-use properties do qualify.
So you could just about take any property, whether it's a single-family or a duplex, triplex, uh, five units, four units, and add one additional unit to it without any restriction from the city? Well, I mean, with it limited. In other words, you can take any, you can take any five-unit and turn it into a six-unit.
Yes, you can. There there are specifications in the state regulations where they indicate percentages. But yes, if you have a six-unit apartment building, you may add another ADU. It's a little bit more complicated in terms of the percentages and what can and can't be converted, but that is correct.
That was never possible before.
That was not possible before.
Okay, um, yeah, no, I, um, yeah, well, that's a big deal, you know, I mean, to anybody that wants to you know, it's pretty easy now to do what people were doing illegally all the time. Okay, no, no, no more questions. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things because it's, it's hard to grasp the concept until you say you could take a four-unit and turn it into a five-unit now. Uh, and it doesn't matter what size of the lot. Before, you needed to have so much land per square feet, per unit. Now all of that's out the window, right? Pretty much?
Uh, that only, only in terms of an ADU. If you, if the developer's proposing new units, the density requirements in the general plan and the zoning code still apply. So these reg, these regulations.
But it doesn't apply to an uh, ADU?
It does not apply to ADUs.
So there's no, if you have a little room on your lot and you could keep it within four feet of the back, uh, uh, you can put a, a, a single or a one-bedroom or even a two-bedroom, right?
The state regulations require cities to allow a minimum of eight hundred square, well, it could be smaller, but we must allow at least an eight hundred square foot ADU on these lots.
No matter what the size of the lot is?
No matter what the size of the lot, the state regulations are very clear in that we must permit an eight hundred square foot ADU.
Yeah, and 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 you, and you, and you have no parking requirements, additional parking requirement?
There are no additional parking requirements. Uh, there are, you know, they specify one space, but as, as discussed, most of the city is within a quarter of a mile of public transportation, a bench. Um, so there's very little wiggle room for us to prevent it.
I just want people to understand what this is all about. You know, this is uh, for people that want to expand or make, uh, well, anyway, it's pretty clear what it's about. You can, they just want you to build, build, build and uh, and they've kind of um, eliminated all the roadblocks, uh, pretty much. Okay, no, no more, no more questions.
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Yes, I would like to know, um, how many people have applied for this, uh, to to build ADUs or JADUs? Are we keeping statistics on this?
Yeah.
Yes, we are. As of today's date, uh, we have approved twelve ADUs. Last year in twenty-nineteen, we approved forty-one ADUs. And in twenty-eighteen, we approved eighteen. So we have a total of seventy-one so far.
And we're receiving about three to five inquiries about putting up ADUs or JADUs a day. Just inquiries, you know, some of them come to an actual application or submit all, but many of them don't. But we're, that's how popular this has become in this city, and I'm sure every city in California.
And I'm, and I'm really curious about the JADUs. Two hundred and twenty square feet is the minimum size for a JADU? What, what can you, you actually can put a um, a kitchen, bathroom, and bedroom in, you know, two hundred and twenty-foot space?
It would essentially be an efficiency kitchen, something very small. It it wouldn't be the traditional large kitchen that you see in homes or apartments. So, and a very small bathroom, typically a shower, no, no bathtub because it would take up a lot of room. But yes, it's, it can fit.
Wow, that's very, that is really, really small.
I believe a JADU, Maria, you can correct me, but they can use the existing bathrooms since it's within the same structure?
They can. They can if they wish to do so.
You share bathrooms?
Yes. Yeah, we haven't uh, received, we only received inquiries for JADUs, haven't really seen an actual JADU yet.
Next person? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just to clarify something here, because I I can see right here on restriction, but people have to understand these EDUs and AGU, whatever, is not for short-term renters, right? Because the state passed this law was because they want to increase housing capacity, correct?
That is correct. They are prohibited from being short-term rentals.
Okay, because we don't want this to come back to us later on, saying you guys are not allowing short-term renters on my property. So we want to make people are very clear on that one.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, guys, so you guys finished over here?
Thank you.
All right, so I just want to let the residents know, and I want to highlight this. Um, we're looking at, I mean, my colleagues are asking about details. Basically, what we're trying to is try to regain as much control over this issue as possible. Sure, there's a lack of housing within the state of California, except that our state is imposing is imposing regulations or lack of regulations on cities like ours that have a high-density population, certain parts of our city that are overpopulated, you know, with uh, high-density structures which have been, in a sense, uh, have not been favorable for the city because what's the biggest issue that we always have, guys? City council? Parking, parking, parking. And so the state irresponsibly is imposing these types of allowances for ADUs without asking for a parking requirement. So everybody comes up to us, what are you doing with prob, with parking? What are you doing about parking? We have some solutions. We're trying to like, at least stay above water, try to regain control over that specific issue. But then the state comes and says, it's okay to basically let people live in a converted garage. That's a legally converted garage at this point, uh, or legally converted structure that's near, next to your, uh, to your house. So everybody that's complaining about people living in people's garages, guess what? The state in essence is be, is legally allowing those at this point. So when you come to us as us, your city council members and say, you know, what are you doing? What do you, well, we need to make sure that you guys know that it's happening up in Sacramento, that they're not considering the uh, dynamics within a specific city as they are. So they should be a bit more careful. There's a lot of cities that are not doing their part. You know, they live nice and fancy and spaced out, and they're not doing their part. But for us, it's been a problem. Parking's been a problem. And uh, so what we're doing today as a city council is trying to get at least whatever control we can over this issue, whatever uh, control over ADU building that we can as a city. That's why you heard my council colleagues asking as many detailed questions on the, on the mechanisms behind this ADU. So there is a housing crisis uh, in the state of California, but it has to be done responsibly. And unfortunately, the state of California has not really thought out any of what they uh, are imposing on us. So uh, we hope that they can come to an enlightenment and start thinking about these things a little bit more carefully, but um, we're working for you and trying to protect you, make your quality of life better. So thank you to council member colleagues. You want to make a motion? Anybody want to make a motion on this?
Oh, it's a first reading.
It's a first reading. Who, who made, who moved it?
No, it's a first reading.
Yeah, if it's a first reading, if it's a ordinance.
Introduce, right?
Yeah, motion to introduce. You want to introduce it?
No.
Yes?
Yeah, go ahead.
Good. Sorry about that. Wow. All right. Okay. All right, what's the next item?
Uh, public hearing item number twenty.
All right, go ahead.
Now is the time and place for a public hearing and introduction of the ordinance number twenty-two oh-six. In ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, amending chapter seventeen point seven-four, short-term rental permits of title seventeen, zoning of the Hawthorne Municipal Code to allow secondary residents newly defined to include dwellings owned by persons who, person or persons whose primary residence is in the city of Hawthorne to be subject to the home-sharing regulations and not vacation rental regulations.
Okay. This public hearing is open, but we will be continuing it to the regularly scheduled meeting of the city council on August eleventh, uh, twenty-twenty at six P M. If you're here, if you want to speak, if anybody in the audience wants to speak on this item, you may do so now. Or you'll have a second opportunity at the August eleventh meeting. Uh, is there anybody who would like to speak? Do you have any communications from the public?
We did not receive any communications on this item.
See no one, and if there's no objections from the city council, the public hearing and introduction of this item is continued to August eleventh, twenty-twenty at six P M. So ordered. Item number twenty-two.
Ordinance number twenty-two oh-seven, first reading. In ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, amending section one point zero eight point zero three zero, city name and seal of title one, general provisions of the Hawthorne Municipal Code regarding use of the city seal for introduction.
Oh, anybody want to make an introduction on this?
Mr. Mayor, I do want to introduce this.
Yes.
Because this was also part of that discussion of the last meeting about using the city logo and seal, right?
Go ahead.
So uh, I just want to make sure that all of us, as are public officials, you know, from uh, city council to mayor to city clerk to city treasurer, uh, just please read this ordinance because this applies to all of us, okay? So we, we would uh, be able to follow these um, these guidelines and not to break the rule. So make sure that all of us read this uh, ordinance and then uh, we can vote on it uh, on August eleven. So I will introduce. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, your consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have item twenty-four and twenty-five and twenty-six on my consent calendar.
Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Please vote.
Sec, seconded by Montero. Um, council member Montero.
Yes.
Council member Taya.
Yes.
Council member Valentine.
Yes.
Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Did uh, did you include item twenty-six on that one? Yes, you did, right?
Yeah.
Twenty-four, twenty-five. Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, city council discussion action items, item number twenty-nine, funds allocated to the city under the CARES Act. Uh, Mayor Pro-Tam Montero.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, you know, uh, as you know, you know, the um, the state of California receives some CARE-AT money and uh, then it distribute for some of the cities. And we were one of the recipients of of the CARE-AT dollar, uh, about one point one million dollar. Um, and we would like probably to give uh, some direction to the staff and the city manager. You know, to see, uh, where can we uh, apply this money because you know how we have spent a lot of money uh, in public safety, uh, because of this pandemic. And we need to come up with some ideas how to spend that money. And also, you know, maybe to improve our uh, technology because I think this is a great idea that Eric has about uh, improve our technology. That Eric has about uh improve our technology uh to city hall. So we can be more effective when we deliver service to the, to the people of Hawthorne because we are closed. Uh, people cannot come to city hall and right now, we do not have the capability that people can go on our website and fill up. Application, for example, for, for license permit or even for garage sale. So we need to see how can we improve service to our constituent that cannot come to city hall. So I wanna direct staff to look into that and also to look how can apply that CARE Act of one point one million dollar. It's not quite one point one, but it's one point zero seven. Uh, but to see how can we use that money effectively, uh, so can balance the, our budget. The other thing that I wanna talk about and I'm glad uh Maggie brought it up. Uh, on during her uh, public comment is about rental assistance. Uh, we know there is a lot of people out there uh in our city of Hawthorne suffering about how to pay the rent. And like she said, you know, the unemployment checks is going to finish and the, the standard have not passed. Uh, the new law that will give people more money, so they, you know, they on limbo over there. So there is a need for us maybe to come up with some type of rental assistance. Because the uh, through C D B G money to the HUD. We can receive uh probably about half a million dollar. And we probably are going to come up with some type of idea how to help some low income family. Uh, with rental assistance, maybe it's only one time and, and I'm hoping uh that we'll come up with a plan. That maybe the money can go directly to the landlord like the city of L A did. So I'm trying to direct uh our city manager Eric Lee and Kimberly Mack. To look, how can they come up with a plan that we could help some our constituent, you know, to pay their rent. And to, to avoid what it's coming, you know, right eviction, it's, it's a dirty word because we know. Uh, there is a talk out there that eviction actually is going to increase. Uh, after this pandemic or even before it ended. But I'm hoping that the state uh of California is gonna pass some laws to, to prevent some, uh, some eviction. Until this pandemic is over, so uh, we're gonna keep that in mind. But right now, I just wanna bless them from all of you to give Eric some direction. Uh, to come up with a plan to spend that one point one million dollar and also the C D B G money. That uh, I wanna put towards rental assistance to our low income families.
Uh, Mayor Protem. Oh, can I, can I mention a couple, I have a couple of questions, is that, is that okay, councilwoman?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, this is really important, I would like to talk about this now, uh, a, a little bit. If you mind, Mayor Protem and council members. As we all know, uh, our C D B G money and you know, uh, Mayor Protem, since you've been in the audi- you were in the audience consistently during like. Different, many council meetings before. Yeah, well, yeah, okay, well, since, yeah. Since I was in high school too, is that what you're gonna say? Not problem. No, so the big, I'm just kidding, guys, but uh. So you, you saw how little, little by little, the C D B G funds started to uh reduce themselves. Reduce themselves, right? And then there was, there was some, it, some uh irresponsible thing some people in some cities did and the Congress at some point. Made it even, made it even smaller, uh, what was distributed. And I remember that you were one of the main uh people at, when, with your nonprofits that you did the T B R A. Ten- tenant based rental assistant.
Yeah.
And uh, ultimately, I think it's been extinguished, it doesn't exist, right?
Well, that is exists because the landlord decide that they didn't wanna uh, uh, a check from a third party. Because they said, okay, you can give one month's rent and security deposit, but then after ninety days, the people don't pay the rent. Then we have to go to court and evict them, it takes them another ninety days to, to take them out. So the landlords decide that they didn't want that money, so we had to put that money somewhere else.
Okay, so uh, little by little, um, the amount of money of even, even despite that, the money available. Uh, was eliminated from this, from the federal government that didn't even allow us to have the T B R A. Um, the tenant based rental assistant in place. So uh, I think we're getting this CARES Act thing, isn't it possible maybe to? I would like our city manager, I mean, this is, you tell me what you think, Mayor Protem, maybe relieve some of that. Some of the commitments we have with our C D B G money that like we've already directed. Certain things that we're paying from the C D B G money. That we can free up some of that money in order to be able to allot that. Towards the tental- tenant based rental assistance program just for this year, do you understand what I'm saying, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, but uh, because we didn't, you know, because we already approved the budget for twenty, twenty twenty-one, right? Uh, from the C D B G. Uh, and we didn't include the uh, uh, the T R A in there. But this is a, this is actually is a new money that came from the federal government through the HUD. Uh, to help because of this pandemic, right? So the, 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 the ideal thing right now is to try to help people stay in their homes, stay in their apartments. By giving them a little help. Because we're not gonna be able to help everybody because we know we have seventy-two percent renters, right? So almost, maybe about eighty thousand people are renters in Hawthorne, so we're not gonna be able to help everybody. So we have to come up with a plan just to help the, the lower, the low income ones. Uh, and, and it's gonna be only one time, uh, and, but this is just. Because we wanna do something for our people because we know there is a lot of people hurting out there, uh, you know, some of them you don't have money to put food on the table. But next year, that's the conversation we will have, maybe to have the T R A back into. Our programs of C D B G because we know a lot of people is gonna need because we're gonna have an influx. Of eviction and then some other, you know, bad things that could happen about housing and, and, and apartment buildings.
Is this a, so, Ma- Mayor Protem, from your understanding, the CARES Act, will this money be uh restricted in its usage? Or can we apply it in this case?
It is, it is restricted, but I think the HUD is already is giving us some guidelines how to do it. So we would have, that is what Kimberly and Eric have to take the lead on this and talk to our HUD consultants. Make sure that we going by the book because you know, right now, the HUD. Uh, you know, is trying to make sure that people are not misuse the money, so it is restricted, but there is. Some leeway that we could do rental assistance to our constituency.
Yeah, this is something, uh, I, I'd be willing to support you, Mayor Protem and the idea. And uh, a, a lot, many of the, the great majority of the residents are happy with the rental uh moratorium that we have extended until the end of the year. But we also have those people that are in need that uh, we need to find ways to support them, so. Would you like to make a, a motion where we can all vote some?
Uh, Ms. Valentine?
I, I, I still have a question.
I'm so sorry, councilwoman, I just, I'll just thank you so much about this, though, go ahead.
Okay, well, I, I want to um, I want to add to the directive because I think. We cannot forget our businesses, they are really hurting too as a result of the pandemic.
Yeah.
I'm going to make, be making a report later on about uh, the results of a survey about that, that was taken. Of three hundred and sixty-one businesses and the impact of the, of the pandemic. And I know that the ca- uh, the CARES Act, I don't know whether the CARES Act money. Would be available to help businesses, but I would really like to see some of it used for that purpose. And I'd like to um, you know, I, I understand and I, and I appreciate the fact that our, we have a lot of people. Renters who could, who will need the assistance. But our businesses are going to need the assistance too, or a lot of them are going to go out of business. Because remember that they had the double whammy of the pandemic causing uh people. Uh, causing no revenue to come in, but they still have their fixed costs. So they are, a lot of them are really struggling. And I think if we can find a way to help them, I would like to help them as well.
To the chair?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Ms. Valentine, actually, uh, I brought it up with Eric, our city manager, cause I said. Uh, I know the small business, uh, you know, not community are suffering because they don't have no income coming in. You know, people are not going out to eat, people are not shopping. So I know they're suffering and probably they have issues about paying their own lease on, on their property. So it's something that I ask Eric also to look into. Maybe if we can find some resources for the small business because we know. Uh, the federal government is talking about to reopen again the small business loan. And out there, so maybe uh, we will try to help them out, you know, to find those resources. And maybe even, maybe even help, you know, them uh, fill up those application online, so that's something that we have to keep in mind. That yes, our small business is suffering out there because uh, we know, um, you know, like you said, it's a double whammy because they. They went and restructuring and open and then the governor went back and closed them again, so it's, it's, so they, they, they hurting a lot, so. Um, unfortunately, you know, I hope this is not come true that a lot of small businesses uh would, would not come back. Uh, to do business because of this pandemic, but we need to do everything possible to help them out like that, thank you.
Awesome, okay, thank you, guys, well, go ahead, Melissa.
To the chair, can I just seek some clarification on the direction?
Yes.
So, um, you know, a- as it relates to um, the, the one million seventy-three thousand that we received from the state. Uh, there's a broad spectrum of uses that, that, that can, that applies. Uh, and, and what I'm hearing is uh, here from the council is to, to come up with a plan on how we're gonna spend these funds. Um, so, some of the areas to consider, uh, improving technology to make sure we can better serve uh, our community um, in this new age. Um, definitely, um, public safety expend- expenses um, are important. Um, anything we can do to help balance the budget in that regard and we also need to have some component that um, uh, provide services to businesses. Uh, and, and, and as it relates to that, um, you know, I just wanted to offer that one of the things we wanna make sure is that. Um, any, any ex- um, assistance we provide to the businesses um, is not duplicating other um, federal or state. Um, streams of, of revenue, um, so that we would have something unique for Hawthorne and, and we're not duplicating services, so that's, I think, on one side. And then as Mayor Protem Montero mentioned, uh, we do have HUD funds uh dedicated specifically um, to addressing COVID. Um, and we really wanna come up with a, a rental assistance program um, and uh, make sure that we're running that well. The question I have about that is, do we also wanna consider some type of mortgage assistance too, or do you wanna, uh, do you wanna really have a proposal that comes back strictly for renters?
I would, I would think it would be for the renters.
It'd be for the renters, okay, because like I said, you know, Hawthorne, we have seventy percent, I know, you know, the homeowner, some of them might be struggling out there. But I think the renter is the one that I, is, is in danger of being uh evicted at, at the end. Because a lot of them are not be able to pay their rent because they lost their jobs or their layoff or they on unemployment. So that's the kinda thing that I, I think the uh, the homeowners, because the banks. Uh, uh, is giving them some relief that they actually can, can make that uh, all these, if they are delayed on the payments. They're gonna go back towards the end of the loan, of the life of the loan, okay? So they can still be living in their house, but instead of paying their house in thirty years, then maybe they're gonna pay in thirty-five years.
I just wanted to make sure we, we bring.
Well, Mayor Protem, I just wanna clarify, you know, I think you make a good point. But I would still like our city manager to still take a look at what's out there with regards to the loans for the mortgage uh payments. And to take a look, in fact, if that is sufficient enough for our homeowners here with the city of Hawthorne. Um, because you know, I've gotten a lot of uh, I've haven't, I've had feedback from the resi- residents who are homeowners. And they also are looking towards the city for additional help and I refer them to like to look at their, their mortgage lenders and to negotiate. And they've been very happy with that, uh, also, that information we've given them, but um, if there's any loophole or any gaps in there. And if that's something that we can help with, uh, for the homeowners, I think we should consider that. Um, so I'd like to still kind of take a look at that, if that's okay with you, Mayor Protem?
Uh, i- i- it's fine to look at, to look at it, uh, but you know, right now, like I said, our priorities is to make sure that people are not gonna be homeless. Right, like, uh, like the ladies, we got three people talking about homeless.
Absolutely.
Uh, and, and, and the most dangerous one is the renters, is the renters that, that is priority. And then I know, you know, me, I, I, I'm a homeowner, so I, I share homeownership, so I wanna protect those homeowners also. Because my plan is to increase homeownership in Hawthorne, so we have, we have to keep in mind. Uh, but priority is the renters, Eric.
Okay.
Thank you.
But the CARES Act looks like it's a large amount, one point.
It's not a lot.
But it's not a lot, that's what I'm trying to say, and since we're looking at, uh. Since we're looking at a diversified portfolio and how we could try to like allocate this money, yeah. But I, Mayor Protem, I, I, we need to still look at the renter, uh, the homeowners.
Yes.
I, I agree, I agree.
So, so I wanna probably uh, not on the eleventh, but maybe the uh, August, the last meeting in August. City manage to have a plan, right?
Yeah, so, so at this point, um, I, I'm looking at uh, staff bringing back a plan on how to spend the, the one million seventy-three thousand. That we're receiving um, from the feds um, by way of the state uh, at the August eleventh meeting. And then uh, at August twenty-fifth, we should have um, a rental and or mortgage assistance uh type program for you to consider.
Alright, thank you, appreciate it, God bless.
So, everybody in favor, you wanna go ahead and lead that, I mean, I sup- I'm in favor of this, okay? So is everybody else in favor of this?
Raise your hand.
Council members, raise your hand, alright, good, good.
Okay, Mike, raise your hand.
Well, no, I did. And I have a, I have a, a, another program that I like to include on there since we're uh, talking about money. Yeah, it's the, you know, the story about Christ feeding everybody with three fish, you know? Gonna be difficult, but you have to look at it and uh, see, see how you could do, make that work.
Yeah.
You know, I got a um, I had a call, I had a call um. Recently from a resident and he said, listen, uh, the alley behind uh Ramona and Truro. Is full of trash, it looks terrible, uh, you know, can we start to clean up the city somehow and? You know, I called Eric and I explained to Eric and Eric called the um.
Republic.
Yeah. Public Works and they went out there and they cleaned it up and one day the guy was very happy. And he continued the conversation about that we need to clean up Hawthorne. That we have programs, I know, I know, we, we, we.
I tried.
I know you did and, and you, you know, but you got, you know, you got it going and you got it halfway there, you know? In that sense, that uh, Republic is willing to cooperate, unfortunately, the calls. Never get to Republic and the stuff stays on the street.
That's what happens.
And I'd like to see if somehow we can start a program and get a few dollars together. And uh, and do something similar to the graffiti removal. Where you uh, you have a, a, a place that you can call, you don't have to call the city councilman. And you can get the same information to the city manager and to Public Works. And start cleaning up the, the city and just uh, uh, that's their primary uh responsibility. Uh, and how to create that, Eric, uh, maybe you could take a look at that and see how much money we can get or. How much, the least amount that we can get by to implement that program and keep our city clean. And just have those, whoever it is specifically, drive around town, picking up. And then having Republic pick it up from a particular place and maybe we can do a hybrid of what uh. Alex Montero started, cause I was there at that meeting, it was a great meeting, but the problem is still out. And it's a matter, it's a matter of uh, getting the managers of the building and getting the people and get Republic together. That's just not happening, it's not working as quickly as it, as it could, so if you could designate a, 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 a. A certain amount of that money and um, and, and see if we can start some kind of a program to clean up. The city for the people, you know, and I think.
Hey, Eric, um, maybe one of the things that could be also part of that technology, right? Because if people can get a way that they can send the information via that technology that you've envisioned. To the city hall, so they can get to the public works and get to the right people. So then we can have a much, a much better handle on the situation, because Mike is right. I'm tired of seeing all these bulk items on the street, couches, mattresses. You know, alleys that people don't stop, so if we can come up, like he said, with, with some type of program. I would love to see that, that we would have our own, as I say, pick up all these bulk items and drive them to a city yard. And then from there, Republican going. And then from there, Republican go and pick them up. It would be a great thing. So I'll all in favor for that.
Good. Let me see some hands.
The chair.
Yeah.
Uh so uh obviously, uh staff understands uh the the importance of keeping the city clean. And you know, really, we we feel like this would be a high-impact initiative as well. Uh I I think that the the opportunity, as we're looking at technology to leverage our ability to serve the community. Um certainly, we could weave this in as part of um some of the uh, you know, serving the city of Hawthorne. Uh even while city hall's doors are closed in in this new era of COVID. Uh so I think we could definitely do that. Um I I I I also think we actually need people lifting items into vehicles.
Yep.
Which I I I don't think that any of these federal funds will do. Yeah, I I have been brainstorming with our staff and we've got some ideas. And I will bring a proposal back for the council to consider at the August eleventh meeting.
Hey, Eric, Eric, just just tell the federal government that it's a it's a safety uh health and safety issue. It is pandemic. So we do, we're trying to not make sure the COVID is not on the alleys.
I'll I'll see what I can do.
Okay, uh within this umbrella of uh CARES Act. I'm going to just take advantage, since I don't have a a discussion item, and I will, for the purpose of uh having discussion for my colleagues and the city manager. Um I heard that there was a couple of local cities that felt that the LA County wasn't distributing. CARES Act money that they received that's supposed to come to us. Uh Mister City Manager, could you take a look at that? I mean, city of Carson of Mayor Albert Robles, he was out there protesting with a couple of other mayors. And we want to make sure that we're getting all the CARES Act money that we're supposed to get. Some of it comes directly to us. And some of it, some of it's given to the LA County, from what I heard, that's supposed to come to us. But they, uh my colleagues feel that we haven't got our fair share. Can you take a look at that to make sure that we're getting what we're supposed to be getting, please?
A- absolutely. And and the city, um I think it was back in May, um actually, at the city council. Um voted to join a coalition of cities, um that I think was spearheaded by Carson.
Yeah.
For exactly for this point. And so we are active participants in and lobbying uh for our share of those funds. And I'll keep the council apprised um as um that uh plea moves forward. Um and so not sure, you know, where that's getting up, but uh we definitely uh need to remain vitally engaged in in getting our share of those funds.
Thank you.
To the chair, actually, I I want to echo that because um you know, we need to get that Mark Ridley Thomas before he leaves office. The uh to get us some part of the share, because what they did, for example, they came up with a rental system program. That did not include Hawthorne.
Absolutely.
What they did, they only need some of the uh, they said they were gonna give some non-incorporated area. But then people that lived in Hawthorne, in Wisburne and and Del Air, they called, they said, oh, Joseph Coats is not on the list.
Yeah.
So so they discriminate about Hawthorne. So I want to make sure that we got Mark Ridley Thomas and say why Hawthorne would not include on those on those services. Thank you.
What what doesn't make sense to me, uh Mayor Protem, is that these, they selectively just didn't incorporate areas of LA County.
But they didn't put Hawthorne, Hawthorne has two, three areas that is not incorporated.
No, there's a, there's some nine oh two five oh areas that they have, but those are like, right, no, but like, the whole point for me is, that's that's LA County money. It does not make sense that they wouldn't even, that Mark Ridley Thomas would not include the cities within his rep uh district.
Yeah.
It just doesn't make sense. That's money. Why be selective? Why does he discriminate?
They receive one point two billion dollar. One point two billion.
Mister City Manager, I'd like to just get even straighter to the point. Can you go ahead and make sure that we get a response from uh? Uh Mark Ridley Thomas, our supervisor's office or himself, letting us know why he hasn't. And letting him know that we need him to be able to offer that rental assistance for our residents as well. I see the city treasurer smiling. It's true, right? I mean, I think we're all kind of a little bothered by that, because we always, we've been getting these messages from our residents, wondering uh why we're not included in this.
Yeah, no follow-up. And then Mister uh Eric, we want him to put that in writing. I want him to respond in writing to us.
What happened? What was that? Can you say that again? Translate that.
I'm not repeating.
No, we we just, we just need a little bit more like, you know, we haven't seen our supervisor here at our meetings or reaching out. So, I mean, I know he's running for office somewhere else. We wish him good luck, but we just need him to help us out with this. This is very important for our residents. Alright, let's move on. Uh gonna open this up is our uh elected officials' reports. Our city treasurer, David Patterson, he's over there waiting. Smiling, smiling.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um first, I want to commend the council for uh your commitment to the community. Um you know, the small businesses, residents, uh the renters, even the homeowners are really having a a tough time right now. And so uh it's one question I get a lot when in uh encountering the community, is you know, what's the city doing? You know, to help the people, um you know, help with rental assistance to help the businesses. So I commend you guys for, you know, making that a priority to 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 put together something. You know, for the community. When I, I also want to thank the the community that did call in and make their voices heard on the issues that are important to them. And the rest of the community that's watching online. Um you know, your engagement as well allows us to serve you the best. So um so I have, thank you.
Thank you, uh Mister City Treasurer. Uh our city clerk, Paul Jimenez.
Um yes, I have a few uh comments. So uh first, again, I want to just thank everyone for watching from home. Um just like our treasurer said, I commend our neighbors for speaking up during public comments. So please continue to have your voices heard. Um I enjoy reading your comments. Um thank you to those who attended our community cleanup on July eighteenth. Were able to bring a lot of good people together and make our neighborhood by by Centennial Park a little cleaner, uh while we got some exercise. So a special shout-out to Kimberly Mack and Melissa Crosswave and her dad for making it out. Um also, I want to thank Dawn from Republic Services and Vaughn for the support in making the program a success. Uh last but not least, I want to thank our interns Gary, Josh, and Samantha for taking a lead on the event. Um through our social media sites, we've been featuring Hawthorne businesses each Monday. And over the last two Mondays, we featured uh VOA LA Hawthorne Head Start and Fabulous Grill. Um there have been some of our most popular posts, so hopefully by featuring them, uh we're able to support some of our stakeholders, get some more business. Um if any Hawthorne businesses would like to be featured, please contact us at the city clerk's office. Um this is a reminder, if you haven't completed your census, please complete it tonight. It will take five to ten minutes. Uh go to mytwentytwentysentencecensus.gov. Um and to end, I want to uh take a moment to recognize John Lewis, who passed away on July seventeenth. Many are acknowledging Congressman Lewis as the conscience of the Congress. Uh Congressman Lewis consistently and unapologetic, sorry, unapologetically spoke out against racial injustice. As an active member of Congress. He was a strong, clear voice for civil rights and social justice, and his legacy leaves a permanent mark on US history. His powerful and meaningful words can help us, help guide us all towards a better future and are needed now more than ever. So thank you for your service, uh Mister Lewis. Um and thank you again uh for those watching at home, and please stay safe and healthy at home. That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister City Clerk. Uh Councilmember Mike DeHeda.
Well, a few things. Um you know, that I was kind of taken back at the idea that nineteen deaths. In our senior facilities. Uh was that uh for the month or was that for the year, Eric?
That that's total uh throughout the pandemic.
Oh, okay, nine, okay. How do we, how, do you have uh information how we. Uh stack up against other cities in the area?
Yes, there's a, there's an index that the county provides that essentially uh normalizes communities. I I think it's um on a hundred thousand uh resident um scale, what each city looks at. And so that's something that I could send the council.
Yeah, you know, I'd kind of like to see what what's happening in other cities uh uh around around us. Um the homeless situation, we're we gotta figure out a plan to help uh these people, you know? So I'd like to know a little bit more about these two uh folks that were mentioned in the uh. Uh in the email, I mean, in the conversation with uh with this gentleman that um. It's Mike and this other fellow. I'd like to know a little bit about that. So when you get that information, please, if you would. Uh shoot me an email. I'd like to know where they're at and and um. You know, there, even though things are so tough, there's still people out there doing wonderful stuff, you know? Uh Sunday, uh not this weekend, but the uh weekend before, I went to my office on a Sunday afternoon. And I saw uh hundreds of people walking out of a church on a hundred and forty-second and Hawthorne. Carrying bags and boxes of food. And I went in to talk to the, to see what was going on. And it was pretty amazing, uh pretty amazing what this particular church uh was doing. And and the congregation was mostly Hispanic and uh very, you know, humble people. And I'd like, I I would love to, unfortunately, we can't do it now. But I would love to have the the pastor come to to us so we could say thank you. And uh and and the the kind of work that they were doing, the the amount of food that they were giving, I don't know where they're getting the food, but I mean, it was amazing. I would say there was over uh two, three hundred people that were walking out with boxes full of, full of food. And that's right down there in a hundred and forty-second and Hawthorne. People sometimes complain about the parking that they take, and I tell you, uh it's a hell of a trade-off, you know, what they were doing. For whatever issues anybody might have. The dumping trash in the alleys and you know, that's, we gotta do something about that. So we've already discussed that. I, my nonprofit got a loan from uh PP, that PP uh program. And uh originally, I had a really difficult time with the banks that I do business with. Uh they weren't taking any applications or they ran out of money. And I think that um it'd be great if the, if we could develop a resource for that. And put it on our webpage of banks that are doing this. And if you hear or know of anyone or any bank that's, or anybody that's had any success with any bank. You might want to put that information. I ended up getting our loan from a bank in Salt Lake City. After I talked to Chase, Wells, and all the big boys, there was some little bank. Probably not a little bank, but it was a bank in Salt Lake City that our accountant told us to make contact with. And we were able to get, uh you know, a small loan where I can, I had laid off my secretary, I I was able to bring her back. Let's see, so that that would be something um good to do. And um you know, I saw a list, you know, there's there's so much going on today with um. You know, with the police and 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 black and brown communities. And and I think that we should make an effort to uh to do what we can. I saw a list of uh black-owned businesses. That uh encouraging people to support that. I thought that was a pretty good idea. I don't have that list right now. But uh that was uh something nice that we might be able to uh to promote a little bit. And um. You know, that's it. You know, thank you, everybody, for taking part. Eric, I want to thank you for cleaning up those streets. Uh the the resident was very happy. And I think that if we do more of that, people are gonna get behind that program. They have to see it, you know, and and then we have to promote that.
You're welcome. Yeah, our Public Works crews were right on, right on that as soon as we reported to them. And so I think it, you know, highlights the fact that we do have uh good systems in the city, once we're we're aware of the issues. Um and if we can get better at that, um the 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 community will get cleaner.
Yeah, yeah, no, it it made us look good with uh how quickly you guys acted on that, so I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Now, you know, that's it for me. That's it for me.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Councilmember Livy Valentine?
Thank you. So first, I want to report on the um seven sixteen, a meeting of the KHHR Communities Network Committee. That's our committee that um discusses the impact of noise because of the airport. And it has seventeen uh community members from different parts of the community. So we had a report um that night from United Therapeutics. They presented their proposal. They're going to set up an, or they want to, they're going to propose to set up an organ delivery system at Hawthorne Airport. Um the, the company estimated that one million people have end-stage organ disease. Requiring a heart, kidney, or lung transplant. And California is an important market for organ donation. So the company wants to set up a charging station at um our our airport helipad. And Hawthorne Airport would be a central distribution point to drop off organs at a local hospital. Um the presenter said that the charging station would charge the aircraft in a safe and controllable way. And that its helicopters have only one-third the amount of noise of a traditional helicopter with no engine or rotor noise. And that's important for our committee, because that committee is all about trying to uh reduce the amount of noise coming from Hawthorne Airport. The aircraft's speed is a hundred and five knots with a distance of two hundred and fifty nautical miles on a charge. It's expected that there would be four to five aircraft landings per day in Hawthorne. And that the entire operation would amount to about two hundred and fifty uh daily operations nationwide. So it's a nationwide company. If the project is approved, there will be a four-to-six-month completion process. And the project was well well received by the uh by the committee and um we'll move on from there. So um I'm not sure what the uh what the the next procedure is. But I think, but obviously, at some point, they will have to come before the city council. But uh um it it's a great proposal and everyone was very excited about it. Another great proposal was that um from our own um, one of our own fixed-based operators. Uh uh he's going to, he requested permission from our committee to draft a proposal for FAA consideration. To amend the flight procedures at Hawthorne Airport, which would raise the initial climbing altitude from three thousand feet to five thousand feet. It's believed that um uh it's based on studies that show that the higher an aircraft can climb initially. The less noise is generated over the surrounding communities. So everyone was really excited to hear about that. Um he's going to draft a proposal and also at that, that that will also be brought at some point before the city council. Before being sent to the FAA. But um the the committee unanimously granted permission for the proposal to move forward. So those were really two important um uh important um things that happened at the meeting. Uh the the other thing I wanted to talk about was the report that when I, I went to the South Bay Council of Governments at their meeting on July twenty-third. Mark Wilbur gave a report. He is the president and CEO of Employers Group and a board member of the National Association of Manufacturers. He reported on a survey he recently conducted called the Business Impact and Reopening Survey. And um updated it from the last one, because this one was about how the second shutdown was affecting business. He interviewed, uh surveyed three hundred and sixty-one businesses, um and fifty-one percent were small. He would call zero to ten employees, and that that that's very small. So this is, this is what, this is some of the the results of the survey. This is scary, folks. Nearly ninety percent of the businesses have felt a real negative impact. Eighty percent have had to lay off employees and only forty percent could have, forty-seven percent could affirm that they would be able to bring employees back. Eighty percent of the businesses felt ready to open if they were given the green light. Most of those surveys felt confident in their ability to self-monitor. And they believe, sixty-eight percent believe their employees were eager to return to work. However, there was severe frustration with the second shutdown. The businesses feel the regulators are not listening to their concerns. And they're especially frustrated with overburdened some regulation. Many expressed fear that if the schools don't reopen, their employees will not be able to return to work. And the biggest thing that they were all concerned about is the changes in consumer behavior. And wondering how much is permanent and will they get their customers back? For example, eating out fewer times. So we're all, we're all eating at home now. So we're all, we're all eating at home now and we're not eating out as much. So will that continue or will we go back to the restaurants? Working out at home instead of going to health clubs. Will the health clubs get their members back? Having Zoom meetings instead of flying to other locations for meetings. Will the airlines get their business travelers back? These are all really big concerns of the businesses. Now these businesses were not necessarily in Hawthorne. I assume some were. But they were businesses in the South Bay, three hundred and sixty one businesses. And I thought this was important because I thought that, I'm sure that many of, our businesses are experiencing, experiencing the same thing. And I just wanted to bring that up with all of you and get your comments, if any.
There.
What?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Valentine for that report. Actually, it is, it is correct. Because I can tell you, for example, the fitness twenty four on one twenty, it's part of the, they filed bankruptcy, you know?
Oh, they did?
Yes. I got a letter because I'm a member over there. So I got a letter saying that, you know, the fitness twenty four, you know, filed a bankruptcy. So they even, they don't know what's going to happen, if they're going to open or not. I just had a conversation this afternoon via email with Chevron, for example. They're looking probably to step reduction of fifteen percent. And, and they already have lost, you know, millions and millions of dollars because you know how the oil market, you know, basically crashed when this pandemic started. So a lot of businesses are suffering right here in, in, in our community. So, and you know how Chevron has been a good partner for our community? And they have given money to, you know, to the educations, to nonprofits. And now, you know, they have to reduce. They don't have, you know, money there to give all to these nonprofit organizations that have done outstanding job for our community. So we've seen this is a tremendous impact. And I do agree that, you know, the state and the county, the way they reopen and shut down and reopen, shut down have caused this business a lot of money. Because some of them, like I said, they put, you know, money into, adapt to the first guidelines, how to reopen. And then they spend all that money, you know, basically wipe up their saving to open and then to, to close again. That is a double whammy. That is affecting the business community out there. Even to tell you the truth, even the Hawthorne, even the Moose Lages, the one in Camarillo have closed, Hawthorne Moose Lodge, you know, if we don't serve to the community, to our members, you know, we would not be able to raise orphaned children and seniors that we dedicate our, our, our mission to. So a lot of these businesses are suffering tremendously. So I, I commend you to bring that up to us because we know it's all over California, especially in South Bay. You know, a lot of businesses are suffering out there. Are you finished with your comments or you continue to go?
No, I'm, I just have one more thing to say about, oh, did you want, Mike, are you raising your hand about something?
Well, you know, I, I wanted, I've, I've spoken with a few businesses and tried to get them to put some tables out on the sidewalks, you know? And, you know, some of the things that they tell me is, you know, I'm, I'm thirty days away from, I had to cancel my insurance. I, I have to do the work, you know, I mean, the, the stories that they're doing, that they're telling me, they're just hanging on. They're just hanging on. And I, I remember, you know, I don't want to take up a lot of time, but I, I, I read up on the Black Plague, you know, in the, in the Middle Ages. And what effect that had on, on, on the future, you know? When, when they lost one third of the population in Europe, it, it just changed everything. It changed everything. And we're seeing something in very similar, it's different times. But it's very similar because what's going on and that, that was a very, I, I can understand that fear that am I going to get my, my clients back? Are people going to continue to wear masks afterwards? Are, are, you know, how, how are we going to? You know, my business is going to change completely. I don't know what the future holds. So there's a lot of anxiety and, you know, a small business in Hawthorne is usually the owner and his family.
Yeah.
You know, that's, you know, ten employees, that's a huge business in our city. The, the bulk of the businesses are small mom and pop operations with two or three people and mostly families and the restaurants and things like that. So, you know, I think that we're just, there's like a finger in the dyke right now. And when things, when we look at, when we're able to evict, not we, but when evictions are possible, when foreclosures are possible, we don't know what, what that's going to do or how much artificially are we keeping that from happening? And so that's coming. That's, that's coming. People, at the end of this whole thing, they're going to lose their homes because the government is not going to pay mortgages. And, you know, I go back to what was going on in two thousand and eight, which was just bad management on the part of the financial institutions. But now this COVID is actually creating almost a very similar situation, putting people in a position that they're, they may end up losing their home. So the future is very, now I would say bleak, but it's very unclear to what's going to happen. So people are panicking and people are afraid of, of the future. So there, yeah, I mean, there's nothing that, I, I don't think that, you know, we can solve the problem, but the, the problem's there. And psychologically, it's affecting people dramatically, you know? And I think that, that we're in for a tough time, you know, even after we open up. Because they're right about that. Am I going to have the clients that I had before? You know, is my business going to be, what percentage of my business am I going to keep after this whole thing's over with? That, that's a valid, a valid concern with a lot of people that own businesses. And I myself would, you know, I, I had to lay off my one employee for a while till I was able to get that PPP money.
Yeah, me too.
All right, guys. So we're ready to move on. Look, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, right. I mean.
I, I really appreciate everybody's comments and because I know everybody's eager. But we just need to make sure that we kind of keep the ten, approximate ten minute mark with each council member. And just stay conscious that we're just adding and supplementing to something that our fellow country. But no, I, I appreciate that. You could write books on your experiences here in Hawthorne, let's see, councilmember tell you that.
I mean, I've seen it. You've seen it. I've seen every cycle pretty much, you know?
So I think Mayor Pro Tem Montero's finished, right?
Oh. Ms. Valentine have, I don't think Ms. Valentine have finished.
Yeah, I have one more, just one more thing to say.
That's what I'm talking about. She needs to finish her stuff. All right, councilwoman.
Thank you. So the South Bay Council of Governments is going to have another dialogue on policing in the South Bay. And that's going to be August twentieth. And you all will be sent a link so that you can log on. That's going to be another Zoom meeting. This time it's going to be, I want to say hosted by Joe Busciano and Jim Butts. And we're going to talk about several topics, community policing, training, use of force, national policing issues, what problems we have, what, what can we build on, what are we doing right, what are we doing wrong? And it's going to be a little more focused than the first one because with, in the first one, we were just kind of really getting everyone's impression on what was going on in their communities. And this time it's going to be much more focused on tools that we, we want the police to be able to use and, and, and learn and use. So August twentieth, six o'clock, and you'll get links for it. And I think, did anyone, did anyone, yes, I know Eric was, was, came to the last one.
I was.
And, and Alex Montero, anyone else? It was anyone else that, well, hopefully you'll all be able to attend on the twentieth. I think it's worthwhile. And if you have any ideas for it, please send them to me. And that's all I have, folks. Have a good week, everybody.
Thank you, councilwoman. Mayor Pro Tem Alex Montero, I think he has two minutes left. I want to hear his. I'm just kidding, man. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I want to tell you guys that Ms. Valentine actually now is the chairwoman of the South Bay CAU since July first. So, and you know that, so she's over there representing us with all the eighteen cities. So go, Mr. Valentine, the chairwoman. All right. First, I want to say, you know, thank you to all of you, you know, especially my city council for, for, for those resolution, you know, the Miss Love Street that finally is going to be in history. And for the, also the resolution about item presentation on the agenda that is not for self promotion, self interest, but is for the public. And we, we, all of us recognize people when they do something for common good for the community, not to promote self interest or self image or, or family's name. Okay? So I appreciate that. I want to say again, thank you to Eric in advance, you know, for, because I think the plan for CARE Act and the CDBG and HUD money is going to be a tremendous task. But I know you and your head department will come up with great ideas for us to approve and move on to help some people in our community that, like Ms. Valentine, all of you have said, you know, people, people are struggling out there and we need to help them. So I appreciate that in advance. The homeless issue, I, I, I'm glad that we got three callers, you know, Matthew and Maggie and the other gentleman, you know, talking about for Don and Mike. Yes. Actually, last week I had a conversation with Jesse Ramirez about some of those homeless on the street because I know I always, you know, drove by one eighteen, homeless there, the park at the Jim Thorpe Park, on Prairie and even, you know, some in Rose Grant. I was talking to him about that. And, and he does have go outside, out there and outreach to those folks and give them information and trying to get them some type of shelter. And we know the Home Key Project, we don't have one in Hawthorne, but there is one in Lundell. So I'm hoping that this, the guy Matthew can continue to collaborate with Jesse Ramirez and also, you know, contact Vons at the Parks and Recs. Because we do have some service as unfortunately sometimes, you know, the, the, the individual on the streets, it, it's very hard to get them into some type of a service, especially mental health or healthcare. But we are there because I see them all the time and, and I even get some package from Jesse and, and business card. And I have gave personally some of those individuals on the street to contact. Even, you know, offered to call myself to say, just call Jesse, so meet them right here on one eighteen at the park and et cetera, et cetera. So even the, last night when I went to pick up my dry cleaning, it was a homeless sitting right in front of the dry cleaning. And then I gave the business owner, the Jesse's card and the pamphlet to call Jesse to make sure that Jesse's aware that there was one homeless sitting right there on, on, on that small business area on one hundred and thirty and Hawthorne Boulevard where I go pick up my cleaners. So we are aware of the situation and you know, me for this past twenty five years, I've been trying to help the last fortune, especially the homeless people. And that is why when I became council, I, I, I choose to be on that homeless task force for the South Bay CAU and to make sure that the city of Hawthorne was going to get some of that money from proposition, from Measure H, from the county, that we will have some service provide to the, to the, our homeless community. And I know, you know, safe parking, safe shower place is not an easy way to do. And I know there is a survey out, a, a survey out there that eventually it will come to this council, that for us to see if we can find suitable places to do safe parking and for shower and everything. So it is, it will come and we would have to decide, you know, if we want to help these individuals because they need help. And, and like I said, Hawthorne, you know, we need to have a long way to go. We have started, but we have a long way to go. And we sometimes have to depend on the county of Los Angeles for service because we don't have per se, an adult sign, an amount of funding to say we're going to have these programs for the homeless. We have to depend on county, the Laza, you know, the mental health, the healthcare, all of those facilities that it's the county that facilitate. But we have to make sure that we are on the table discussing with them how to bring service to our needy population, especially the homeless. So again, I want to commend the public for coming to bring this to our attention. And, and Matthew, keep advocating because that's the kind of people that we need. And I hope Don and Mike will find a suitable shelter soon. And I hope in one of those, you know, Home Key that is right here in, in Lundell. If it's not in Lundell, maybe in, in San Pedro or even in, in Long Beach where they have some other service. Again, you know, I want to say that we are on the right track, right? Because we are trying here to create some type of relief, some type of program for our community. And we all, you know, same pace, you know, business are suffering, families are suffering. And I want to say to, to Mike, yes, yes, the churches actually has been a blessing because all the churches in Hawthorne has been giving food, you know, from the Bell Air Bathe Church, from the one hundred and thirty seven, Pastor Greg, Pastor Delaney, Pastor Phil Cook, even on Prairie, they're all giving food because, you know, people, long lines, especially on Friday afternoon, if you go down Prairie and like around Prairie one thirty, one thirty four, you will see a big line of people waiting for food to arrive. So yeah, the churches are doing very good, you know, feeding our population because like I said, there is a lot of people there that don't have money to put food on the table. But thanks God that we have the churches that are providing food. And even, you know, the LA Food Bank is giving food to the people also. So we have to keep those things in mind. We have to, you know, come together, pray together and make sure that we will survive this pandemic. But we have to take one day at a time and be strong because a lot of people there, you know, are suffering, you know, depression. Even last night, they were, they saying that divorce is at the highest rate they ever seen, people file for divorce. So apparently people leaving, you know, spending a lot of time together has not been lovely, lovely, lovely. So, lovely. Please love each other, don't hate, you know? So we are here and this is a great city, great country. Love you all. Good night.
Okay, so, well, I love all of you guys. So do you guys love me?
Sometimes.
Sometimes? Oh, okay.
No comment.
Oh, that's, I don't like that. That's mean, man. Come on. Okay, all right. But, um, all right. So thank you all for being here. Are there any go backs? I'm going to ask you now, Mayor Pro Tem Alex Montero.
Honestly, um, no.
You got something. I know you're gonna, you're gonna like, ah, all right, all right. Well, thank you all for being here. Thanks for, everybody for participating, all those people that called in. We really appreciate their feedback. Very good point. I have a question for our city clerk, Jim Menes. I don't know if you have this information available. I think you mentioned previously, like, what's been the, the rate at which the census has been turned in? Like, where are we at? I mean, have we kept track as to the numbers of people that are submitted? Because I think it's been low. That's why we're trying to make sure that people are participating.
Yeah, no, definitely. So let me actually give you the number right now. So as of yesterday, it was sixty two. So our city's at fifty nine point seven and the national average is sixty two point six percent. So we're below the national average.
So ideally, we need, we need to meet a hundred percent of the people that responded the last time? Is that what you're trying to say?
I mean, I, ideally we get a hundred percent. I mean, right now we're at sixty percent almost.
So are we using, so like say, for example, we estimated, so six, the percentage is a measurement of what? The number of people that have responded based in reference to what in the previous years?
It's in terms of the households. So in terms of the households in Hawthorne have responded.
So estimated from the previous, like where we're at. Okay, good. So that's why we, we make another, I make another call for our residents to participate in the census so that we can be able to have fair representation in Congress. And also that the numbers, our population numbers also affect how much money we get from our federal government, our state government and our county government as well.
CDBG money.
CDBG money, all the CDBG. CDBG money, all the CDB, CDBG money that we're talking about. And it doesn't matter that you're a resident, either a citizen, a resident or somebody that doesn't have like uh, their legal standing in this country, uh, uh, you might not have documents to live in the country. It doesn't matter. You need to participate. Um, this is, this is very important. This is not information that's used against you to go after you. If you have somebody that's undocumented within your family household, please count them. Just, you know, please count them so that we can get all this money and we could, uh, serve everyone here.
Through the chair real quick, um, just-
Any qualifications?
Yeah, just to add a fact to that, um, the census keeps your, uh, information confidential for seventy-two years. So you can be, you could rest assured, no one's going to get your information.
Yeah, that's not the purpose of that. So exactly, that's not the purpose of that effort. We just, we really need you to participate.
Yeah, everybody count.
So, en español, por favor, participe en el censo de la ciudad. Okay? So that was basically, please participate in the census for this year. So all these people who speak Spanish out there that might, I need to hear that. So of course Congressman John Lewis, we lost the, a great hero for the civil rights movement. Yeah, very, very deep impact that he had. Not only was he a participant in that, participant during the civil rights, uh, era during the sixties, but then he continued as a public leader and impacted so many lives with his efforts. So, um, he will be missed. And, uh, actually I have a friend, Anthony Dixon, who's a relative of his, is his nephew. And he's a local LA County firefighter. So, um, I saw how, uh, deeply affected he was on his personal loss because he knew him not only as the congressman, a congress member, but as his uncle. So that, that's an extra, uh, extra impact on somebody that I know. So, um, my condolences to Anthony Dixon and his family for their loss on Congressman Jungles. So, very important. There's, the state has mandated, the state has mandated the closure of many businesses here within the city of Hawthorne. And unfortunately, uh, I got in repeated messages about one business, Coast Fitness, that still remains open. So, uh, we hope that the owner of that business participant is an active participant in, uh, preventing the spread of COVID nineteen coronavirus. So, uh, this is, these calls have come, these calls have been made from our residents to, you know, the different authorities. So I'm just letting our city manager, if you can make sure that you reach out to him one more time. Um, and I think the LA public health, the city is not responsible for addressing this at this point. It's the LA County Public Health Department. And, uh, can you, can you say anything about this, Mr. City Manager?
But, so I, I know that, that there's a case that has been opened, um, and, um, our code enforcement has, you know, actively provided whatever information they needed to, to the county. At this point, it's a county, county handle. Um, and, uh, the county is going to work directly with, with the owner.
I mean, they've already, they've heard about it from the re, the residents themselves. So it's not like the city basically told hot damn or anything, but, I make a direct appeal to the owner of Coast Fitness to please participate. There's lives at stake. The almighty dollar is ultimately not the only thing that you need to think about. It's people's lives that you need to consider. So please, uh, help us out here. Uh, so the issue, thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So with regards to the homeless issue, this is a very important issue that is of concern to our city council, our whole team, our city treasurer and our city clerk, um, and, uh, our staff. It's very important. We need to address it. And, uh, but, um, so we have programs. We have a great homeless task force. Jesse, uh, out of Parks and Rec is the case manager for the city of Hawthorne's homeless population. And he's out there, he's working. Okay? And I know that people did call and, uh, asked for these individuals to be helped. So we have the resources. And, uh, we, and it's great that the callers and the, either residents or concerned, uh, citizens are calling about the individuals who needed the help. Um, I forgot the actual names of the individuals, so, and-
Ben and Mike.
Yeah, so, uh, Don and Mike, I think it was. So, Mr. City Manager, make sure that our homeless task force, uh, team reaches out to them to get them the resources because we have that already in place. So, so that's what they're there for. They're supposed to put them into like, uh, some type of housing, some type of, uh, or, or put a roof over their head and to help them with whatever resources they need. So we have that already in place and we need to, we're, we're proud of that, uh, but we need to make sure that anybody who knows anybody that needs help to just relate to us. Okay, so it's not about, you know, like, what is the city not, no, we do have that. We have that in place. But then there's also various, since I worked out at the LA County jails teaching the inmates that are out there, I do work with a lot of mental health, uh, professionals there. And one of the things that they told me is, uh, um, they told me, Alex, you know, we know that people want to help all the, the, the people that are homeless, but sometimes there's people who refuse services. So we also have to be very conscious of the fact that not everybody out there is going to want to be helped. And you can't force somebody into a, into a motel or a hotel, uh, put a roof over that. You can't force everybody to go into a mental health program or to take advantage of services. Uh, so you also have to be conscious of that when asking, what is the city doing or what is anybody doing to help these individuals? There is that element. I don't know what the exact numbers are, but according to these mental health professionals that work with LA County, it's a sufficient enough number that you do see people still out on the streets. So we need to keep that in mind. We need to pray for these individuals. We need to still, uh, relentlessly go and try to help them and, uh, see if we can bring them in into some form of help. So we can't stop. That's the ultimate message. But we have to be conscious that there's a, a deeper issues going on there and that we might not be able to help every single person, only because it's like, like I said, you can't force people as well. They, they have the right to refuse. Um, so I wanted to bring to everybody's attention the fact that the city of Hawthorne has been looked at for its services during the COVID nineteen, uh, pandemic. The different things that we've done to help our community have, uh, been looked at by other city councils, other city mayors, they've called me and said, I can't believe you guys are doing that in your city. Like, how do you do this? How do I get this resource? How do I do this? And so not only is it the city, but it's the community and the churches that are putting, so one of the big things that, you know, previously we had a diaper giveaway, we had a mask giveaway, face mask giveaway. And we currently, the city gives away like about three hundred and seventy, three hundred and eighty meals to kids every single day, Monday through Thursday. Um, I think we should constrict it to Monday to, we had it Monday to Friday, let's say. And then we also give, uh, about a hundred and fifty meals to our seniors, you know? Uh, so there's different, different things that, and the city council approved the, uh, COVID nineteen testing facility, which we, uh, had, uh, went into a contract with LA County. So that's still going on. And then the, the churches as well. These are the churches that are notably I am aware of that are giving, some of the ones that my council member colleagues mentioned. But Del, Delar Baptist Church, um, gives out food every week. There's a small giveaway of food and a large giveaway of food interchangeably every week. So I was, uh, uh, blessed to have been out there about two or three weeks ago and helping them kind of load these things up into the, into the, into the people's cars. They need help because there's a lot of, uh, they need help volunteers to be able to load these, to load this food into people's cars because, um, that some of the volunteers um, are people who are, uh, susceptible to the COVID nineteen virus. So they're staying at home, so they needed more volunteers. So if anybody's looking for an opportunity to volunteer, please contact me and I'll put you in touch with the right people over there at Delar Baptist Church so that you can help. So kudos to Pastor John Jefferson on his efforts. The Islamic Center as well has been having some great giveaways of, of food through, directly through its, uh, Islamic Senate, through the mosque and also through some associated, uh, nonprofits that work with the mosque. So kudos to our friends at the Islamic Center. And of course, uh, you guys remember two or three or four weeks ago, Mayor Pro Tem Alex Montero had his giveaway with, uh, the labor unions that were, that came, the LA County Federation of Labor and some of its, uh, ancillary, uh, auxiliary, uh, organizations, uh, came together and delivered food here in the city of Hawthorne. And there are several other churches that are helping as well. So, I mean, we have like great things happening in the city. Our programs are, are, we have like online, uh, classes in our Parks and Rec. Our programs are opening up, packed up. Our pool is opening up with, uh, precautions. So, uh, we're, my ultimate message to everybody is out there is, please wear your face mask. Uh, please, uh, wear it as correctly as you can. Uh, it's easy to, it's easy for this thing to slip like this because when you start talking, everybody, everybody's nodding, yeah, right? That's happened to me, you know, and everybody's like, ah, you know? But it's, uh, you know, it's easy. Make sure that it's covering your nose, covering your mouth and you're safe. Make sure you guys have your, uh, six feet separation, uh, between people. Does it, I call it physical distancing. I don't call it social distancing. We don't want to break social connections with people, but we want to break this physical distancing. So that I make that distinction. And wash your hands, sanitize your, yourself, et cetera, just so we can knock this thing out, uh, once and for all. And also I would, I would suggest that if you do see somebody not wearing their face mask, carefully ask them to please consider putting on their face mask when you're out there. I know there's, uh, there's, uh, sometimes people get like offended and, but you know what? You got to do what you got to do. You want to protect this? You want to get out of this thing as soon as possible? Make sure you do your part. Make sure you like tell other people, uh, to, to do their part too. There's no reason to stay quiet. Let's be proactive about this. I'm tired of this. Everybody's tired of it. I'm tired of wearing these things. You guys are tired of it. So if we can knock this thing out once and for all, we'll have, we'll be done with this. And this whole coronavirus is, uh, over and done with. Okay? So, uh, I want to thank you all for being here. And I just want to close out this meeting, uh, wishing, uh, making sure that we all keep, uh, Councilmember Hadarawad's mother, who's suffering from breast cancer in our prayers, to make sure that she, uh, recuperates as soon as possible and that she will be, um, to the best health she can be, uh, very soon. Okay? So I think that's it. Uh, if there's no, nothing further from our city council member colleagues? Okay, so this meeting is now adjourned.